Okay, seven o'clock. Let's get this Central Berkshire meeting started. This meeting has been audio good and recorded. Motion show our examples, these can be omitted or amended. Let's start with the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Albert?
Here.
Mr. Case?
Here.
Dr. Craft Reese?
Yes.
Charlotte Crane?
Here.
Bonnie Di Tomaso? Dr. Everwine? Mr. Emerson?
Here.
Mr. Ferella?
Here.
Dr. Jelinas?
Here.
Mr. Lakata?
Here.
Ms. Ledizori?
Here.
Ms. Lounsbury?
Here.
Mr. Stewart?
Here.
Sarah Tucker?
Here.
Mr. Peters?
Here. We have a forum. First up, responses from the audience. We have Logan Conde, Dalton here, wants to like to speak.
Hi, Mr. Dalton.
Yeah, all right.
I want to come to you for approval regarding gazebo renovation at Wocona. If you want to look at these photos. I'm currently working on my Eagle project. And the Eagle project that I wish to complete is the renovation of a gazebo outside Wocona Regional High School. I will be removing the frames and screens of the gazebo. I'll be color washing the gazebo. I'll be staining the gazebo with different color stains. And, yeah, that's it.
Okay, so I think that's on our agenda.
Thank you for speaking to us. That's really helpful. We really appreciate it.
Thanks. Anybody else? Okay, so first up is student affairs. Daniel Sargent?
So we've had a good amount of stuff happen after our last meeting. We had graduation for the class of 2024. That went really well. And then we also had the senior assembly, which I got the M.C. for, and I loved that. That was awesome to do. We had the evening of excellence where awards were given to students, freshmen, sophomore, and juniors. And book awards and scholarships were given to juniors. We had the final exams, and those went really well. And now we are officially out of school since June 12th, which was our last final exam. And captain's practices for all sports have already started. I know for football, we've already been going for two weeks now. And the class of 2026 have a fundraising car wash for the class. That's all I had.
That's all? Thank you. Any questions? Okay. So next up is financial reports. We had several previously approved warrants, and we have some gifts and donations. So first up is acceptance of donation to the Mark Franklin honorary award.
Be it resolved that the Central Berkshire Regional School Committee accepts a donation of $1,000 from the John and Carrie Cullen Hill Fund in the Mark Franklin honorary award as recommended by the district treasurer.
Second.
Motion is second. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Albert?
Yes.
Mr. Case?
Yes.
Dr. Craft Reese?
Yes.
Charlotte Crane?
Yes.
Mr. Emerson?
Yes.
Mr. Ferella?
Yes.
Dr. Jelinas?
Yes.
Mr. Lakata?
Yes.
Ms. Ledizori?
Yes.
Ms. Lounsbury? Ms. Lounsbury?
You're here. That's, I got it. Mr. Stewart?
Yes.
Sarah Tucker?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes, motion carries. Next up is acceptance of donation to the Doc Shepherd Scholarship Fund.
Be it resolved that the Central Berkshire Regional School Committee accepts a donation of $2,000 from Schwab Charitable to the Pat and Kelly Calm to the Doc Shepherd Scholarship Fund as recommended by the district treasurer.
Second.
Motion is second. Any questions or comments? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Albert?
Yes.
Mr. Case?
Yes.
Dr. Craft Reese?
Yes.
Charlotte Crane?
Yes.
Mr. Emerson?
Yes.
Mr. Ferella?
Yes.
Dr. Jelinas?
Yes.
Mr. Lakata?
Yes.
Ms. Ledizori?
Yes.
Ms. Lounsbury?
Yes.
Mr. Stewart?
Yes.
Sarah Tucker?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes, motion carries. Next up, acceptance of donation from Logan Conde for the Wocona Regional High School gazebo.
Be it resolved that the Central Berkshire Regional School Committee accepts a donation of refurbishing the Wocona gazebo by Boy Scout Logan Conde for the Eagle Scout Program.
Any questions, comments? We have them here, obviously. Okay, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Albert?
Yes.
Mr. Case?
Yes.
Dr. Craft Reese?
Yes.
Charlotte Crane?
Yes.
Mr. Emerson?
Yes.
Mr. Ferella?
Yes.
Dr. Jelinas?
Yes.
Mr. Lakata?
Yes.
Ms. Ledizori?
Yes.
Ms. Lounsbury?
Yes.
Mr. Stewart?
Yes.
Sarah Tucker?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes, motion carries. Next up, P.E.A.L. Wocona Regional High School Class of 2026 Car Wash.
Be it resolved that the Central Berkshire Regional School Committee approves a fundraiser for the Wocona Regional High School Class of 2026 of a car wash to raise money for their class.
Second.
Motion is second. Any questions on this one? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Albert?
Yes.
Mr. Case?
Yes.
Dr. Craft Reese?
Yes.
Charlotte Crane?
Yes.
Ms. Di Tomaso? Mr. Emerson?
Yes.
Mr. Ferella?
Yes.
Dr. Jelinas?
Yes.
Mr. Lakata?
Yes.
Ms. Ledizori?
Yes.
Ms. Lounsbury?
Yes.
Mr. Stewart?
Yes.
Sarah Tucker?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes, motion carries. Next is approval of the Wocona Regional High School Class of 2028 Music Bingo Night.
Be it resolved that the Central Berkshire Regional School Committee approves a fundraiser for the Wocona Regional Class of 2028 of a music bingo night to raise money for their class' future activities.
Second.
Motion is second. Any questions on this one? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Albert?
Yes.
Mr. Case?
Yes.
Dr. Craft Reese?
Yes.
Charlotte Crane?
Yes.
Mr. Emerson?
Yes.
Mr. Ferella?
Yes.
Dr. Jelinas?
Yes.
Mr. Lakata?
Yes.
Ms. Ledizori?
Yes.
Mr. Stewart?
Yes.
I missed something here. Sarah Tucker?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Who did I miss?
You missed me, literally.
I'm sorry. Liz Lounsbury.
I'm also a yes.
Okay, thank you.
Motion carries. That's the end of the donations. Next up is the authorization for the treasurer to borrow money in fiscal year 2025.
Be it resolved that the district treasurer is hereby authorized under the provision of general laws, Chapter 71, Section 16G, as amended by Chapter 134 of the Acts in 1972, and with the approval of the chair of the district committee to borrow money from time to time in anticipation of revenue for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2024, and issue a note or notes therefore payable within one year and to renew any note or notes as may be given for the period of less than one year in accordance with general laws, Chapter 44, Section 17.
Second.
Okay, motion is second. Any questions on this one? Seeing none, hearing none. Roll call vote. Okay, sorry. Sorry.
Do we know what, what are we borrowing?
Go ahead.
So, who isn't here tonight? But this is basically related to our ban and related to the building project. So we have a ban, and it needs to be extended. So it's, and this was built into the budget. And we're going to be meeting in September of, so this is being, so this ban is basically extended for one more year until we go out for the final bunch. So that, that allows us to do that. Thank you.
It's also revenue anticipation. Even when we don't have a project, it's kind of, it's an annual thing. The treasurer always has to borrow money in anticipation of payments from the state and from the town.
Dave, does the spirit hold me up left? What we're waiting on is to close that out.
So I am going to have to, in terms of financially, what we have left is in terms of the building project. We have not had our official audit and visit and that kind of thing. We filled out all the paperwork on time, but we're just waiting for that.
Just waiting on the state.
Yeah, on M.S.V.A.
And what's holding you up?
It's just, it's just.
Takes a long time.
It takes a long time.
Even when things are going well, it takes a long time.
It takes a long time. Yeah, but things aren't going well. It just takes, there's, there's a time factor.
There he goes. Roll call, please.
Mr. Albert?
Yes.
Mr. Case?
Yes.
Dr. Craft Reese?
Yes.
Charlotte Crane?
Yes.
Mr. Emerson?
Yes.
Mr. Ferella?
Yes.
Dr. Jelinas?
Yes.
Mr. Lakata?
Yes.
Ms. Ledizori?
Yes.
Ms. Lounsbury?
Yes.
Mr. Stewart?
Yes.
Sarah Tucker?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes, motion carries. Next up is the secretary's report, approval of minutes of regular meeting of May 23rd, 2024.
So move is ready.
A second.
Motion is second. Any questions, comments?
Can I, I would just like to add something. I emailed that from this. I'd just like to add, under the regional drinking discussion, the superintendent's, just that I asked about ladies emailing the, following the Hinsdale county meeting, and that Mr. Berry was going back to DASI just, was strictly informational.
Yes.
Okay. So I just asked.
Do you want what you sent me, or do you want what you just stated? So what you sent me? What you sent was he jury-very is checking with DASI to clarify 5.25 casting requires five or six pounds to approve. Is that what you want?
Yeah, yeah, that would be fine.
Okay. Any, any other? Okay, if I get a roll call vote to approve the minutes as amended.
Mr. Albert?
Yes.
Mr. Case?
Yes.
Dr. Craft Reese?
Yes.
Charlotte Crane?
Yes.
Mr. Emerson?
Yes.
Mr. Ferella?
Yes.
Dr. Jelinas?
Yes.
Mr. Lakata?
Yes.
Ms. Ledizori?
Yes.
Ms. Lounsbury?
Yes.
Mr. Stewart?
Yes.
Sarah Tucker?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes, motion carries. Okay. So does anybody have a problem if I move the CPRSD staff requisition wars after the front? It's in my area, but I'll just move it up to now. No, no objection. Okay, so we have some folks that have 25 years of service. Thank you very much. We like to recognize them. But luckily, you guys speak to that. Nice, very.
So we have three faculty members that we're awarding their 25 years' service this evening. One is an art teacher that works at the middle and the high school. Her name is Karen Schultz. She, she could not be here this evening, but we will make sure she gets her plaque and her award. The other one is a high school teacher, and his name is Matt Ostrander. He also could not be here this evening. He was, wished he could, but he couldn't. He also, Matt also received Teacher of the Year this year at the high school, so I just want to give a little shout out for that. So I told him he, we would definitely make sure that, that ended up in his hands. And then the, the last person is someone who I have worked with since, I don't know if it's the whole time I've been at Central Berkshire, but for a while, and somebody that I have a lot of respect for and that who I really rely on to work with students and staff, really K through 12, when it comes to health and wellness. And one of the things that she always does is not just make sure that we're following the frameworks, we're following the standards, but that students are having fun in the process. And then the other piece that she really always adds to this is that as a, as a staff, a CPRSD staff, that they're always cognizant and aware of their own health and wellness. She always talks about the wellness triangle, and I probably can't say what's on the wellness triangle right now, but I know it's impressive, and I do try myself. But I have so much respect and admiration for Carrie Mason, and so I just want to give this award to her.
Can I tell your assistant, Ms. Mason, you deserved it?
Thank you. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. You are.
Okay, next up is the superintendent's report of recommendations.
Okay, so I don't have a lot this evening. A little bit about graduation and step-up day. Graduation was, it was beautiful. They had senior assembly, which really honors the class as a collective. They choose their own theme. And it's just, it's really curated and managed by the junior class, and it's for the senior class. They did a beautiful job. There was class night award, we had class night awards. And then finally, they had graduation. And it's the fact that they break it up into three different parts means that each part really gets, it's, the students really get honored in a way that they should be honored. So that was amazing. Step-up day, Mike and I really sort of tech-team it. We try to, I, we both went to Nessicus. I went to Craneville, and Mike went to Kittredge. Unfortunately, little schools, we, we go back and forth between the years. All of them were beautifully done and well-attended, and I just can't say enough nice things about the teachers and the staff and how they honor their students on those days. And then what we're doing right now, we are busy right now, actually. Mike is busier with the new reading program. I'm not really busy with the new reading program, but we have beautiful, beautiful books right now that are in the Craneville cafeteria, lots and lots and lots of them. And it's just, it's kind of, it's, I mean, he's really doing a lot of lifting, physically doing a lot of lifting and stuff. But it is nice to see the books there that students will have in their hands very shortly. We're trying to get everything unboxed and open so teachers can have their manuals. The really, really, you know, near and dear to my heart are these, are the early literacy books called Geodes, and they're amazing. They're going to be, you know, in, in students' hands. It's just, it's just going to be a really nice thing for a district.
And if you, the investment that we've made in our, in our early literacy, it literally fills the entire cafeteria of Craneville. So if you go, you can see K through 5, the piles of books, it's pretty amazing. And Beth is, Beth has been working.
Beth is, I'm sorry.
We've together counted every single book, and if you want to see what roughly a quarter million dollars' worth of books looks like, it's a lot of books. And Beth has touched every single one. So thank you to her, too.
So that's happening, and then also we're planning for in mid-July. We always have a two-day admin retreat. We have that at Wocona. And then that's followed by a one-day instructional leadership team meeting, and we call that our I.O.T. And those are the couple days with our admin team, that's when we really go over things like, you know, management and operations, expectations. We don't want anyone to really have to run too much brain space over, you know, things that should just be routine, things like field trips, things like, you know, making sure that everybody's doing due diligence around, like, course approvals. And, you know, the attendance, and that we're coding everything correctly. There's, as we make that PowerPoint and we pull from last year, of course, we look at each other and we say, wow, there's a lot to rent the district. But, but, you know, every year we think of more things to make us hopefully more efficient. And then the other, we also, another component of that is analyzing our N.C.S. data, which we have preliminary data right now. It is embargoed, so we can't share at this point. We will as soon as we can. But we go through a pretty thorough analysis of our N.C.S. data during our admin retreat. And then during the instructional leadership team meeting, that's where we start really digging into, those are administrators and our, plus our teacher leaders. And that's when we really start looking at things like, we always reference and go back to our strategic plan. We look at the hallmarks for effective instruction, our common instructional model. We're going to be diving into the new reading program and choosing focus areas for this year and looking at professional development. So it's going to be a really busy three days. We like to do it in mid-July, because if we do it in mid-July, it gives everybody a little time to sort of digest it all in a, in a way that they want to in their own timeframe. It's not like it happened, you know, we've got a little time before school starts. So that's really what's going on right now in Central Berkshire.
Any questions? None? Okay, thanks. So next up is me. First up, we go through the recognition. So we also have the annual M.A.S.C., Mass Joint Conference in November. That is, it's very valuable. I've thought several times. We need to ask for folks who want to go this year. Does anybody want to volunteer to go? Dave wants to go. He was there last year. He knows how well you do this.
I had a great time. Learned a lot. Would like to learn more.
Anybody else? Anybody on mine? Want others? To the conference? You can, you can, if you're not sure, you can sign up for it. We can change the names later, but we want to have two names.
Where is it?
It's in Kitcot, Hyannis. And it's spring education. It's not beach weather. It's November.
It's so nice to walk on the beach.
So, but it is really valuable. It's very educational. If you have the opportunity to go, it's well worth it. I'll say that word back after a long many years. And I'll go again if nobody else wants to. But you don't have to sign up today, I think. I'll put David and myself down, and then we can, if somebody can go, I'll encourage you to do so. Because it is really very, very, very educational, well worth it. I learn so much every time I go down. It's crazy. So, so why don't we do voting delegate, why don't we do Dave this year? And I'll be the, I'll be the non-voting delegate. So in motion.
You'll be the alternate.
I'll be the alternate?
You just don't want to miss a lunch again.
You get to sit through that.
That's the worst part.
Yes, it is.
Be it resolved that the following members will represent the Central Berkshire Regional School Committee at the annual M.A.S.C., M.A.S.S. Joint Conference, November 6th through 9th, with the voting delegates of David Stewart and the alternate being Rich Peters.
Second. Quick motion, second. Any questions, comments? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Albert?
Yes.
Mr. Case?
Yes.
Dr. Craft Reese?
Yes.
Charlotte Crane?
Yes.
Mr. Emerson?
Yes.
Mr. Ferella?
Yes.
Dr. Jelinas?
Yes.
Mr. Lakata?
Yes.
Ms. Ledizori?
Yes.
Ms. Lounsbury?
Yes.
Mr. Stewart?
Yes.
Sarah Tucker?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes, motion carries. Next up is the school committee self-evaluation. It's that time of year again, again there. I will try and simplify it, remove some of it from last year, but I'll be sending that out shortly for us to look through. Please, feedback's a gift, you know? Let's send it back and see what we get. Okay, so then it's update on the revised original agreement and discussion on next steps. So I think you all know, we did not pass in Hinsdale, Peru, and Comington. So, and it was essentially, and Hinsdale and Peru is stuck on the voting method. And what we understand is the voting method that's in there is, is the best we can get from DASI, that they'll approve. And I don't think either Hinsdale or Peru accept that. They think it could be more. What I, what I would suggest, and this is just my suggestion, but it's open to the committee. My suggestion is, instead of going back to the drawing board with the regional agreement, because we, everybody, we spent a year and a half on this, all seven towns involved. It's a lot of people's time and effort, and I'd say we're 99% of the way there. Maybe 100% if we can't change this. But what I'd like to do is, my suggestion is that we get the, either individual, we meet with the towns individually with, even if we get representatives of DASI there, I don't know, but certainly representatives from Myers, legal representation, and the school committee representation with the folks who basically need to pass this in there, or at least buy into it. And that is the towns, I would say the towns select boards and the towns finance committee chairs. Because those are the folks, or the town managers. They, they, no matter what we say, it just doesn't go anywhere. We think that's the, that's the best we can do. It may be that's the case. It may not be. They want to do more. They want more from that. If, if we can do more, then we will have to open it back up to the other towns. If we, if we can't do more, and the select boards and the, and the other members understand that, and they agree to back it at the next spring town meetings, then we don't really have to do any more work with the regional ad hoc committee because there's no substantive changes. If we can do more to accommodate them, and then we have to go back to the regional ad hoc committee to get the other seven towns to agree to that, and the other seven towns, because I mean, it isn't, it isn't Hinsdale's approved regional agreement, it's a seven-town regional agreement. So if we do change it to accommodate them, we then have to go back to the regional ad hoc committee. So what I, I'd like to do that work first, maybe in the fall, in October. And that's what I think is a good way to go, instead of going back to the drawing board. And that's just my suggestion, and I'm opening up to what all you think.
In the meantime, we just operate on the old original agreement, correct?
Right. Well, because it wasn't voted, wasn't passed, we don't have a choice.
Right.
Right? So we're basically, you know, under the old. Anybody else?
Couple of clarifications. Has Comington voted it down at this point? I know they had an information. I know they had an information.
Yeah.
They had, so three towns have voted.
Yeah.
The other thing is, well, one of the, we don't have to wait until there's the annual town meeting. A town can approve it at its special town meeting.
Yes.
So that could happen.
It could.
In the fall, or late fall.
Yeah.
You wouldn't have to wait until the annual.
Right.
There are, there are a lot of options. You know, if it's passed, it doesn't change anything when you die or are doing.
Right.
School committee didn't change, the assessment for capital didn't change, really, the operating didn't change.
Right.
Very little, nothing, nothing operation changed.
Right.
So we could do nothing. And nothing happens. And you have to weigh, I mean, we have spent a lot of time on this already. And your outline of winning Atlanta is doing more. And, you know, what's the cost of that? It's a very subjective or a favoritical thing that, you don't want to, and, you know, having come through a lot of budgets, votes up and down over many years. What happens is, if a town or a group of people get in the habit of voting one way, they will continue to vote that way. If they're, they think a yes vote on the budget, you know, that's what we do, we're always going to do that. That's what they do, they don't, they don't look at it. And the contrary can happen too. If they kill something, kill a budget, next year it's harder with that town. Because they already know they can kill the budget. So it's not without cost to go into this again unless we can be absolutely positive that it's going to pass.
Of course, there's no guarantees with the, with the towns. I think one of the things that we didn't do, because quite frankly, I didn't think it was going to be controversial, because basically nothing changes really from what we do. So we did not, we did not campaign at all. We didn't try and get people to come out to vote, you know, like, you know, like, when we went to the school, you know, there were groups out there getting people to go out and vote. We didn't do that here, so we basically didn't rally, you know, parents and people like that to say, hey, come to the town meeting, support your school, right? We didn't do that. And it didn't pass. I think, you know, that's one of the things we could do, is we get people who are, you know, interested in backing the school, you know, in moving it forward, we get them out to vote, I think we'll have a positive vote in that respect. But I think more importantly, I think it's a matter of trust between, between, it, it, what happened is, I think it's a breakdown of trust with the, between Hinsdale Peru and the school committee in that, you know, what happened with the high school vote, I mean, it all comes down to that. And that's really what their disagreement was at these meetings, was all about the town vote. So I'm understanding from DESI and from Myers and from legal that what we got was basically state law. And we got what we could get. They're asking for us to go beyond that, and I don't know that we can.
You're talking just about the capital.
Yes, just about capital.
Yeah, that's absolutely correct, yeah.
Right, so I, what I, but that, that did not fly at the town meeting, us telling them that did not fly. So I don't want us to tell them that. I want, you know, appropriate people who, who know whether we can and can't go further and explain it to, to the folks who will. So that's, in the end, they, they'll know they can't get what they want, or they can get what they want, I don't know. And then it becomes, then it goes back to the seven towns, and we renegotiate with the seven towns. But I don't think we can go any further. So I think if we get those folks on board with understanding that this is the best we can do, I, I think that they would support the recent agreement, why wouldn't they? So that's, I feel like if we can get their support, not by listening to me, but by listening to other people that are more knowledgeable in this than I am, and, you know, our team, then I would think that they would support it at that point. And then, and then support it at the town meeting, at the special town meeting, or next spring, either way. I mean, that's the, that's the avenue I feel we should take. I don't, to your, to your point, I mean, the school committee could decide this, you know, I mean, we could have, I don't know that we need to vote on it, or we can just debate it, but you're, you're suggesting is not do anything, just walk away.
I'm not suggesting that, I'm saying there's a cost to whatever.
Yeah.
One way or the other, and one has to be aware of those costs.
Yeah.
And decide whether it makes sense or willing to pay that cost.
Yeah. Oh, Barbara's saying it.
Barbara's on the other hand.
Yeah, I don't know, I don't know. I, I think it's, I mean, it's about relationship building, right? And the relationship is already, you know, sour, and we've got to work to build that relationship back up. I don't know how.
I think as far.
I think the best thing to do is to talk, keep talking.
Yeah, I, I thought that they had been, well, I know that at least one of the select board members, a former select, knew that that was the best they could do. Now, maybe there, there are new members of the select board in Hinsdale that didn't hear that or don't want to believe it, I mean, you guys are better judges of that than I, but I thought that was pretty well explained to them. I know we met with Vivian Mason and at least one other, and it was clear, I mean, we tried other things. Clear to Vivian, I think.
Yeah. Yeah, Viv said she made, she spoke, and she said that, you know, she didn't know what else we could do, that she said that was the best we could do. She didn't know what else to do. Barbara wants to say something. Barbara?
Yes, hi. I just wanted to say that I think that after all the meetings that we've had with the RAC group and under Todd's amazing leadership, I think we need to do something, we just can't let this sit. I think we have to do something, and the idea that Richie presented of talking and having community meetings, I think that's the route to go. I think the more we can spread the word and with the Mars people, because sometimes you need to have outside representation before people internally will believe you. So we'll get the Mars people to come and offer some, you know, small group meetings where we can have a give and take. I think that's a good option.
Right. Anybody else?
Sophie.
What?
Sophie.
Oh, Sophie. Go ahead, Sophie.
First of all, good afternoon, hi. First of all, good afternoon to everybody, I do apologize for not being there in person. Mr. Peters, I want to come back to what you were saying earlier about getting people out there to be able to accommodate them and make sure that they have a budget and that they can come out and vote. Like, my question would be, what would you guys be willing to do to accommodate the other towns with their budget?
I don't, I don't follow you.
She's mixing up the budget.
To adopt the budget?
Yeah, she's mixing up the budget and regional agreement.
Yeah.
Can I ask a part of one?
Oh my god, I'm so, I'm so sorry, I feel bad.
She's our speaker, yeah, no. She's our speaker, she's a member of the committee. She said, she's allowed to speak. So I'm not, I don't.
She mixed up a couple of different things.
I think I just confused some.
Yeah, 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 yeah. We're, we're talking, yeah, that's all right, we're talking about the regional agreement that we even ended. And we spent a lot of time working on that with a, an ad hoc committee over the last year and a half. That's, it's not the budget, it's a, it's a something separate from that, that has to be approved by all the towns.
Ouch.
Yeah. Thanks for.
Thank you, you called us, not again?
No, that's good, thanks for your contributing, I love it, it's great. Yeah, Dave?
Go ahead, something.
There's, there's a few things. I certainly support that position of going out, talking to the towns, talking to people as a group, going out to sell this, which is why I've brought that up multiple times before the, before the town meeting votes on this. That it was something that we should do, is go sell this since we worked so hard on it. You know, we, we may not be able to accommodate every single town. Some of that would require possibly a home rule petition to change some of the sixteen D voting requirements, so it's not a, or to, so we, so we can't use sixteen N or however it works. But I, I do think it is important to go listen to the towns and, and trying to incorporate what, what it is that they're trying to tell us. I think Hinsdale is, is saying that they, they want to know more, they want to know more ahead of time. You know, one change could be making sure that when we do take that vote, that the vote for the method D or N is a separate vote. It would show up on the agenda, it's something that people would see if, if they read the agenda. So, you know, so that is something that we could do to make more notice of it. But, you know, certainly going out, talking to these towns and figuring out what it is that we need to do. I don't know if it's best to do that within the regional agreement committee, or this committee, or how that breakdown would happen, like, who those people are, I'm not, I'm not sure if that's best. I mean, I was originally thinking that in the RAC committee would be better, because those are town reps that are there, that are working on this, so, so I thought that might be a good place to go first, is to send it back to them, to us. Sorry, Todd.
And I think that's actually, I would say that's the committee's, you know, purview, right? Like, if the committee wants to do it that way, I'm, I'm on board. I, my feeling was, the regional ad hoc committee spent a year and a half working on it, and they, they spent a lot of their time, and I just don't want to waste their time again if we don't have to. But if they're on board, I'm, I also, I'm good with that. Really, I brought it up, I put it on here mainly because I didn't want to make a decision myself of how to do this. I wanted the committee to decide how to go forward, you know, what's the best way going forward.
I just wondered, like, is there a way to get the information out there other than hosting community meetings? Do we ever get, give information to town members otherwise?
They were, the agreements were sent to them, they had their legal review, I mean, they had, they had all this ahead of time.
It's, I, so, because I'm new to this, and I just want to make sure I'm understanding. I'll hold. Go ahead.
There, I mean, we could do more, for sure, we could always do more. I mean, I, I know, you know, I, I, quite often I'll go to the town meetings, or I go and speak to Bob Graves, the town manager. Before this vote happened, I was away, and I didn't make the last few meetings before, so I didn't, there wasn't a lot of communication between me and them before this town meeting. So I literally landed a few hours before I went to the meeting.
But it's all the people in the town that are registered voters that are voting. So I guess that's, that's my point of clarification. Like, I think you're probably getting the same pocket of people that are going to come to these meetings that you're presenting to. So like, have we ever done anything like, you know, electronically, or like, reaching out other ways? I guess, it's like, I would be a person that would never set foot at a town meeting until, until coming here and learning a little bit more. I just didn't know.
Yeah.
If you don't know, you don't know, and I feel like a lot of parents would want this information, it would, it would not be going to these town meetings.
Well, that's what I said, we did that, you know, that happened when the schools voted out. You know, the town, you know, parents came out, you know, to town meetings to pass those, those votes. And we could do things like that.
But that was a big deal to people, and when people are hearing, hearing this, that's just for an average person, it's not a big deal, nobody knows what you're talking about.
Right, right, yeah, yeah.
Don't know if there'd be a way just through the electronically, with the, like, Leslie, you get ahold of all the parents and give notes that way? Would there be a little blurb?
Right.
That could come out to all the.
Yeah, we could absolutely do that. That's very simplistic and easy to understand, like, because a lot of this is just so complicated, like, people are not going to realize it's important.
One thing that the town of Covington does, which brought it out, I thought quite a few people for a small town, is they do a robo, they do a messenger call. So everybody in the town actually got a phone call. And I thought that Covington did have at their town meeting, I don't know, Todd, you would know better than I would, but it seemed to me like the attendance was.
It was more this year than it has been, it was pretty good.
Yeah, for, yeah.
Did they always do that robo call?
Yeah.
Yeah, they do.
Go ahead.
So I want to just say that I support your plan. I, I like that idea of going to the towns that did not pass it and sitting down with the professionals and trying to explain it a little bit better, just from experience at Covington. No matter what we said, they weren't hearing what we had to say. The other thing I want to say is timeliness. So if you remember, we as a school committee approved the agreement, it was just a week later that Covington had their town meeting. There was no time to get out there proactively at that time, and a lot of that was, some of the towns really kind of dragged their feet in getting it back from their legal review. Just wanted to throw that out there. Just timeliness, there wasn't a lot of time for us to get out and campaign for this, if everyone kind of remembers that.
Yeah, great. As far as getting people out, and I think several of us recognize this, there's sort of a diminishing trend of people engaged in town, local government. Hinsdale, I think, had fifty-six people at the town meeting, so that's less than five percent. Which was probably the smallest that we've had for our people at the town, or at least the whole time that I've been moderated there. So we really didn't have much of a turnout at all at the town. You know, that's, that's not something that we can do about it here. I mean, it's not a school committee issue, but, but I, I think it's a general issue in many of our towns.
Yeah.
Less and less people are involved, so we can have, you know, it, it kind of go back and forth, you know, we can have these, these meetings and nobody shows up, and we say, well, or a few people show up and we say, well, we have a meeting. You know, we checked the box, we did, we did our best, we did what we could. But we can't make people come to these meetings, you know.
No, but we didn't even.
We didn't even try, right.
Right, just assumed it was going to go.
And that's, that was a bad assumption of mine, really bad assumption.
So I'm of the opinion that, that nothing can, no. What we have in the proposal is probably the best that the towns could expect in Hinsdale and Peru and so forth. But Dave mentioned this other solution that, that, you know, personally, I have no problem with it. You can implement that with a change to our policy. The, the school committee will always have separate votes, and maybe we usually have. We could make that a policy, which would say that we're always going to do that. If we came in with that proposal, that might be enough. That's probably the best that they could get. And if, and if we could have that proposal on the table and have the states say, yeah, that, that'll work, then we wouldn't have to change the, the proposed regional agreement, or might get that vote if we pledged to change the, our policies, and they could actually see us do that.
And that would be chapter forty-one, section sixteen, fourteen D is what spells out the process that we would take for incurring debt in districts. That's, that's where it has a default method of sixteen N, where we would essentially have to take a separate vote to go to sixteen.
Yeah.
And to go to the popular vote, it would, it would certainly get noticed, and that is, from what I hear from Hinsdale, I think that is one of their, their complaints, and I think that's one that we could address it.
You want to speak?
Um, I, yeah, currently, well, actually, Art has, Art is performing.
Okay. Art?
Yeah, I wanted to ask, for instance, in Hinsdale, did the Hinsdale Select Board recommend it or recommend it to vote it down?
They did not recommend it to pass, they recommended to vote it down.
Okay. And I, I'm assuming that might have been the case in the other two districts as well. My point with that is, I don't, very often, most often, the people coming to meetings kind of go along with what the select board is recommending, because the select, the select board is more, more in touch with all the issues in, in, on all of, all the things that we vote on. And I think it's, it's a job of, of getting the select board on board, and the way to do that is what Rich has said. It's not meeting with all the towns' folks, it's meeting with the select board, with the people from Mars, who are the experts, who can say what can and can't be done, and get those folks to understand that that's the reality. And if they make the recommendation, people go along with it.
Yeah, thanks, sir. Liz?
Um, just a couple of things that Jay had suggested, and I was in communication with him, and he mentioned that we do something similar to that. He also suggested that we ask Russ to attend, and in conversations with Russ, Russ said he would. So that we would have Mars attending, we would also have Russ attending these meetings. So both of them said they would. Jay did reach out to the, to DESI, and he reached. Um, Jay did reach out to the, to Desi and he reached out to Desi's legal department. And he, he asked, do we have to have this section around how we vote toward, on incurring capital debt? And they don't give you a really solid answer. They're not going to say, yes, you do, or no, you don't, or you don't. They give you an answer that you sort of have to interpret a little bit. Um, but basically the answer was, um, that they, it doesn't have to be in there. But they like to have it in there and there, there are always going to be those two options. They, they didn't seem to indicate that we would have flexibility, um, to only include one. That there wasn't a lot of hope that, that they would approve it. But they're not going to tell us ahead of time, yes, we'll approve it, or no, we won't. They just, um, it, 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 there was a lean on, if you don't, you don't have to have it in there. In the absence of having it in there, it goes with MGL, which is two-thirds vote, one of the other, um, school committee decides. And, um, and, and if you have it in there, you just know that there's, you always have those two options because it is MGL.
But at this point, to take it out would require RAP to.
Yes.
And would probably require all the, the other four towns to re-vote.
Right.
Yes.
It would, absolutely, it would, it would, so, but I just wanted to mention that those two things, that, that, um, that they, that Jay did reach out to Desi Legal for us, just to see if we had any flexibility around that particular line item.
So right now, we're operating under the overall agreement, which doesn't have that language in it anyway. So we, right now, we operate under state law. So, I mean, it really doesn't change anything, that's why they couldn't have commercial, because it's state law. But, uh, again, that was naive of me.
Anybody else? David? Yeah, I, you know, I, I do want to remember that this agreement is more about the towns than it is about us. I mean, we, we have compliance within this and we have to do within the regional agreement, but this is really their agreement.
Yeah, for sure.
For the towns, you know, and part of, part of going back and listening to some of the towns or all of the towns is to find out what they're willing to do, you know, what steps, their home state, if they want to try and change state law, if they want to try and get home rule or whatever. It's also on them to, to take some steps to get what they want out of this. Right?
Right?
What's your estimate on how long it would take a home rule amendment?
Oh, I don't know, I've heard years.
It would be years.
Right.
Yeah, so, I don't know, is, is, if there's any objection to doing the, what I suggest? We need to vote on it, just, uh, we can make an attempt at it and, uh, put it together. And if anybody wants to be involved, they're welcome to it, I think I might, uh, suggest.
Go ahead.
I, I could send out an informational, uh, I, I could send something up that's informational to all the, to all the community members when I, just, similar to if I send something out about. Like if I send out, like if I send out a snow day message, I reach a lot of people. So I could send something, information, you know, something out.
Would come second vote.
Along, or even when there's stuff we have to.
Well, I was, I wasn't thinking it would be a public forum. I was thinking we'd just meet with the individuals that are opposed to it and just try to, you know, more informational and try and get their understanding of why we're giving, why, why it is what it is. And then bring it to the towns.
Yeah, I mean, I agree with Rich's approach. I think the bottom line is that trust is broken between the select boards and the school committees. So if we have people from Mars or Desi Legal telling them that, no, the school committee isn't trying to, or the people on the school committee aren't trying to get their way, this is general state law. There isn't anything else we're going to be able to do about that, this, it is what it is. I think they're going to, they'll come to an understanding.
That's all.
Rich, can I just, just ask the organizational structure, like, are you, is that like a, another subcommittee? I mean, we have the RAP subcommittee, like, I'm just curious how that works organizationally within this committee?
It's a good question, I don't think, I don't know that it's, I don't know, does it have to be a committee?
I don't know.
I just felt like it was, if we got the people in the room that needed to be in the room together, you know, we can have a discussion about it and break down that wall. Whether it has to be, you know, an ad hoc committee, I don't know.
We would want to send it back to the regional agreement committee?
Well, that's what I, what I said, I didn't want to do the real whole regional agreement because those people spent a year and a half negotiating this. And I, I mean, I don't think, I don't think it can change. So if we can get the, the towns that didn't pass it, pass it on their own, we don't have to amend the regional agreement, right? We're good.
Right, right, I'm just thinking those, those are the people that have worked on this that.
I guess we could.
I mean, I mean, I myself, I'll volunteer to work on this and, you know, I'd love them an opportunity to, to try and get this through, you know. So.
Yeah. Yeah, Leslie's saying we could do a special school committee meeting, you know, special meeting, like those votes. I'm not sure if they would come. If we vote again, we have a good chance.
Could we do a special school committee at, or, because I, I would appreciate, I mean, I, I'm not from one of the towns that's.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You know, um, bringing up these particular issues, but I still would like to be, you know, I would like to understand better what their concerns are. And, um, yeah, I, if we could make that happen, I, I would support that.
That's a, I mean, that's an interesting idea, give it a try.
Like we talked about, uh, policy, just have a hearing.
Yeah, have a regional agreement hearing.
Yeah.
The school committee puts on and it's not a school thing, it's a, yeah, a hearing. And then everybody from all the towns could come. It might be your select board people that are especially interested then.
Yeah, that's, that's not bad.
If it's a special meeting, we would have to have a forum in the school committee.
Not for hearing, not for a hearing, you don't.
Information. Yeah, that, I think that's not a bad idea, we can give that a try. I mean, I, I'll talk to my town, but you can talk to Peru and maybe we can set something up, give this stuff.
Then you get your lawyer and everybody, just one shot, they don't have to go to a whole bunch of things. It's a one night deal, perhaps that would be better for them.
We can, honestly, let's take that first step, let's take that, let's try. Let's try with that. And if we aren't successful, then we're, then I think we have to, I don't know, bring it back again next year and, and get the vote out. You know, if we don't change it, we'll have to get the vote out in, you know, Peru, Covington, so. And try and get support that way. Sound good? Good discussion, everybody.
One, one, and I, I understand you might not know the answer to this, but since it passed in some of the towns, but not all of the towns, how long does that yes vote remain valid for? Right, so if we have this and then go back out and say Peru has a special town meeting and decides to decide to warn and pass it. Or next year at the annual town meetings, like, do all the towns have to pass it again?
I don't think so.
If we don't change it, then. I, I'm just curious.
Yeah. I, I don't think so either, I think once the town votes on it, as long as it stays the same, substantially the same, I think we'd still be happy inputting, I could be wrong. Give you an answer on that. All right. Moving on, um, the calendar's on there, the only thing I want to note is that September, uh, you might have it on yours, we had to change it to, uh, from the twenty-sixth of September to September nineteenth, twenty twenty-four. There was a conflict there, so. So can we get a motion to approve the?
Be it resolved that the Central Berkshire Regional School Committee approves the fifth year twenty twenty-five school committee meeting calendar.
Second.
Motion is second, any questions, discussion?
Mr. Phillips?
Yeah, just a quick comment, um, I know in the past there was lots of talk about gaining information specifically around the budget and budget presentations to the towns. And so if we approve this, um, I would appreciate it if we could somehow to get this information as a, right out to the towns as soon as possible, just as one more contact point, so it's like, hey, this is when we are meeting here on the budget. And we know that in the past, they felt like there wasn't good communication, but this is us making that effort as soon as we've approved the work calendar.
I, I can take care of that, absolutely.
Anything else? Roll call, please.
Mr. Alfred?
Yes.
Mr. Case?
Yes.
Dr. Craftreese?
Yes.
Charlotte Crane?
Yes.
Mr. Emerson?
Yes.
Mr. Ferella?
Yes.
Dr. Jelena?
Yes.
Mr. Lakata?
Yes.
Ms. Ledizori?
Yes.
Ms. Lounsbury?
Yes.
Mr. Stewart?
Yes.
Sarah Tucker?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes, motion carries. Yeah, that's all I have, next up is, uh, September reports, first up is curriculum.
Good evening, everybody, curriculum met, uh, on the eighteenth at seven PM on Zoom. Uh, we had two topics to discuss. One was the new, um, science curriculum that we'll be piloting this fall. Um, we'll be doing this, um, in middle school. Um, and the reason for it is that the state has changed their, uh, MCAS for science. Um, and they're now using more multi, uh, evidence questions, little deeper dives into things. So, and these questions are actually directly based on this, um, on a curriculum that they've deemed high quality. It's really the only one that the state right now has deemed high quality called Open Sci Ed. Um, it's an open source, free commun, uh, free curriculum. Um, we were not in the MCAS pilot last year, so we didn't choose to pilot it yet, they were still sort of working out some kinks. Um, they want to adopt to do a unit per grade, uh, this coming fall. As a pilot, materials are free on the website. Um, but there are some vendors such as Carolina Ed that package this in a more organized, traditional curriculum way instead of just downloading all the materials online. Um, they plan on piloting it in, like I said, early fall. Um, and if we don't like the program, we'll have to wait another year to see if any other programs, um, come out. Uh, there is one other one called, um, Amplify, but they were also part of what we looked at for our ELA pilot, but the teachers didn't really like the interface, so we assumed that it would be the same with science. Um, uh, Open Sci Ed is being adopted this year in Huzek and North Adams. So teachers will go to see the curriculum in action once they have piloted the unit. And then they're going to, uh, weigh in on how much time would take. So we can either do the further version of it or, uh, partner with Carolina Ed and spend a little bit of money to, uh, have a prepackaged, organized, uh, this is a prepackaged, organized way. So they'll weigh how much time it would take for the teachers to actually write out their own curriculum for the programs or whether it's just worth our, the money for the trade off of the time to have Carolina Ed do it for us. Um, and then we'll probably pilot a, a Carolina Ed version of the curriculum of a unit to see what it's like. Um, there won't be a curriculum council because there isn't any curriculum really to choose from since there's just one. Um, and then Dr. Hanal will report, report back to this committee in August with some progress. Um, and see how it's going. And we'll take it from there. Um, high school has some more choices for curriculum as does, than the middle and elementary. So they'll go through science, uh, science, um, in the middle school first and then move on to high school. Any questions on that before we move on to the next topic?
Did you say Huzek and North Adams are doing it now or starting?
They're starting it this, this coming school year.
Starting.
Yeah. So it'll be good for the teachers to go in and see the teachers actually using the, this, um, curriculum. Anything else than the other? So the other topic we had, um, was approval, uh, or recommendation of the overnight cheerleaders field trip. This is the annual church field trip to cheer camp. This year, it is in a different location because the old host decided not to do it, so now they're going to go to Pennsylvania. It's three hundred and thirty dollars per person, um, that covers all of the food and classes and, um, the stay. Eleven of the twelve cheerleaders are going, so there won't be any buses needed. Um, their coach and assistant coach can, uh, pack everybody in both their SUVs and drive. Um, the dates are, uh, the thirteenth through sixteenth of August. Um, they've been fundraising or will begin to fundraise, do some raffles and other fundraisers to offset the cost per person. Um, they, uh, the coaches will be going through medical forms just to make sure that everything's filled out and that they understand if there are any allergies or any other, um, medical requirements needed. Um, and I, like I said, they've gone every year to a cheer camp. Uh, so, uh, we had no problem recommending this for a vote for the school committee. So I will read the motion, um, and if there's any questions or, uh, further discussion, Nikki's here to answer. So be it resolved that the Central Berkshire Regional School Committee approve an overnight field trip for the Wakona cheerleaders to Pine Forest Cheerleading Camp at Beach Lake, Pennsylvania, August thirteenth through sixteenth, twenty twenty-four, as recommended by the curriculum subcommittee.
Second.
Motion is second, any questions, concerns? Nobody, okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Alfred?
Yes.
Mr. Case?
Yes.
Dr. Craftreese?
Yes.
Charlotte Crane?
Yes.
Mr. Emerson?
Yes.
Mr. Ferella?
Yes.
Dr. Jelena?
Yes.
Mr. Lakata?
Yes.
Ms. Ledizori?
Yes.
Ms. Lounsbury?
Yes.
Mr. Stewart?
Yes.
Sarah Tucker?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes, motion carries.
And, um, that's all we really had to discuss. Uh, our next meetings will be, we'll have one in August and in September. We haven't decided on the dates yet because I was waiting to see the dates for our school committee meetings those months. But August, we will be discussing end of year benchmarking, uh, review of any changes to the student handbooks and getting an update on the science piloting. And then in September, we will review the MCAS results.
Thank you. Next up is finance, Mr. Ferella.
So we held our last finance committee meeting on June thirteenth at Wakona. Uh, two major topics to cover. Uh, the first is around Wakona and more broadly Central Berkshire Regional School District properties and maintenance specifically landscaping. Uh, this committee discussed the challenges facing Wakona and more broadly, uh, our district's property maintenance and landscaping. Several areas have been identified to have a lack of upkeep that present our properties in an unflattened light. Examples include athletic field, athletic fields being in disarray, weeds and mulch, rain gardens looking unkept, unkept, uh, broken juvenile trees, et cetera. We learned that originally, we trusted the original plans of the experts who designed everything for Wakona, including the mulch to the, to the, up to the sides of the buildings, uh, and the tree choices, which may have been poor choices as the maintenance is improving burdensome. Greg informed us that he's stepping in temporarily to fix, um, coordinate, to fix and coordinate mowing around our buildings because there's currently a vacancy for the district wide building and grounds manager. Uh, this position is in process of being filled. I don't know if there's an update on this or not, but there were two candidates that were already being interviewed. The committee discussed how this role should evolve to a supervising role to facilitate district wide ground maintenance and to build partnerships with community resources. Greg was also looking at pricing to remediate some of the ISORS and to make future maintenance easier, such as replacing current mulch areas with grass so it could be mowed instead of weed, we could save a lot of time. Dave joined our conversation too as a community member to share his expertise in some outreach opportunities such as working or partnering with UMass Agricultural Extension Office. He also recommended we look at different species of grass and ground covers for athletic fields that could perform better and ultimately result in less maintenance over the longer term. Also that we need to come up with a plan to, to figure out these issues and get them resolved. Member Everwine suggested, uh, school beautification committees involve potentially teachers, PTO and students, uh, could be involved so that we could use existing resources to manage these properties, there might be some opportunities there. We have Superintendent Leslie also recommended that we consider creating an ad hoc or new subcommittee to focus on ground maintenance, so that's going to be a topic in the next. The other major topic we talked about was enrollment and anticipating, anticipating staff needs. Uh, we discussed how Superintendent Leslie Blake Davis discussed how the committee believes that, A, discussed with the committee, that she believes that a zero point five FTE student adjustment counselor, SAC, was needed at both Wacona and zero point five FTE at Craneville based on state recommended ratios and feedback from principals. She informed the committee of current staffing deficits where student needs were not being met. The Director of Student Services, Nathan Lu, described how SACs and other administrators spend their time to highlight their roles and to really show where there is need for these types of roles and their responsibilities to see if, we really had a good conversation around would it be possible to use existing administrators to sort of fill some of these gaps. We were provided after our meeting with a spreadsheet that really showed all of the different administrator roles and responsibilities for each different person and where some overlaps existed. And it was very clear in there that there were not enough places for current or existing resources to help fill those needs. One interesting data point is that there are, correct me if I'm off on this, but twenty-three percent of Central Berkshire students receive weekly SAC support. And trends would suggest that that number is only going to rise over time. At our previous finance committee meeting on May twenty-first, we talked again with Student Director of Student Services, Nathan Lu, about the English learner education review deficiencies that we received. We covered those issues at our last meeting, but we did receive more information about the current deficit. Where the weekly recommended minutes for ESL instruction is three thousand fifty, and we currently only provide two thousand one hundred. Much of this is due to the current staff having to travel all over our district in order to meet with these different ESL students. A nine hundred and fifty-minute deficit, so a point five FTE would completely fill this gap. Before I go into some motions. Any questions?
Is it one staff that's going around the district now for the English?
So, all right, can I change the order?
Go ahead.
All right, so be it resolved that Central Berkshire Regional School District Committee approves a zero point five English language teacher for fiscal year 2025 with the cost of wages and benefits to be paid from the rural aid fund.
Second. Motion or second? Any other questions coming? Yeah, Dave?
On the rural aid, do we know a couple things about that? Do we know how much money is in that fund? I know that we're typically like, we receive the most in the state. It's a healthy amount. So, and this will, I guess, go for the other motion as well. You know, what's in the fund, how much these positions draw from the fund, and what would be left? Because we did use some of our rural aid to offset our assessments. Keeping in mind that rural aid is intended for consolidation, collaboration, those kinds of things that may be useful as we're looking at facilities or grounds managers that could possibly collaborate with other districts. So, do we have those numbers?
I don't have them in front of me.
I mean, I can give you, I can give you general numbers. I can tell you, we typically, last year we received one point three million. We're on track to receive the same this year, although I don't think the governor's budget is actually, it's not, it hasn't passed yet, but it's recommended. It's in there as receiving the same, that we would receive the same amount. What we put into the budget, was it seven hundred? I think it was seven hundred thousand to cover operational costs. So the difference between seven hundred thousand and one point three is sort of that remainder. And a full-time FTE with benefits, Dick probably knows this better than I do, but I think we're probably looking around eighty thousand at the top. That would be a, you know, probably a little high maybe. So, and that is actually at finance, that's going to be a discussion. Greg is going to be reporting out on exactly, you know, the exact amounts of the rural aid and what the anticipated costs will be. So that'll be a discussion at finance. So.
So it's eight thousand? Is it eight?
Eighty, probably a net FTE would be about eighty thousand.
So one and a half, three one twenty there? So it was like five?
Ish.
Ish, yeah.
A big ish.
Yeah. Yeah.
Any other questions? There are motion or second? Make a roll call vote please.
Mr. Albert?
Yes.
Mr. Case?
Yes.
Dr. Krefreese?
Yes.
Charlotte Crane?
Yes.
Mr. Emerson?
Yes.
Mr. Ferella?
Yes.
Dr. Jelena?
Yes.
Mr. Lakata?
Yes.
Ms. Ledizori?
Yes.
Ms. Lounsbury?
Yes.
Mr. Stewart?
Yes.
Sarah Tucker?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes, motion carries.
All right, so be it resolved that the Central Berkshire Regional School District Committee approves a one-year position of one student adjustment counselor for fiscal year 2025 with costs, wages, and benefits paid from the rural aid fund.
Second. Motion or second? Any discussion on this one? Tina, roll call vote please.
Mr. Albert?
Yes.
Mr. Case?
Yes.
Dr. Krefreese?
Yes.
Charlotte Crane?
Yes.
Mr. Emerson?
Yes.
Mr. Ferella?
Yes.
Dr. Jelena?
Yes.
Mr. Lakata?
Yes.
Ms. Ledizori?
Yes.
Ms. Lounsbury?
Yes.
Mr. Stewart?
Yes.
Sarah Tucker?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes, motion carries.
I think I forgot in my report to just say at our next meeting, we will be discussing creating facilities in grounds subcommittee or what we could potentially do there, update on rural aid and potentially for an additional teacher at Kittredge Elementary School. So now for the approval of the retainer for fiscal year 2025 for general legal counsel to pre-law offices. Be it resolved that the Central Berkshire Regional School Committee approves the retainer for fiscal year 2025 for general legal counsel to pre-law offices.
Second. Motion or second? Any questions, concerns on this one? Mike?
How much do we pay for that retainer?
Yeah, Greg's not here.
The packet says sixteen hundred. Is that what it is? If my memory is correct from what I read in the packet, just curious.
But you've got it right there.
Yeah, it is sixteen hundred.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Any other questions? Roll call vote please.
Mr. Albert?
Yes.
Mr. Case?
Yes.
Dr. Krefreese?
Yes.
Charlotte Crane?
Yes.
Mr. Emerson?
Yes.
Mr. Ferella?
Yes.
Dr. Jelena?
Yes.
Mr. Lakata?
Yes.
Ms. Ledizori?
Yes.
Ms. Lounsbury?
Yes.
Mr. Stewart?
Yes.
Sarah Tucker?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes, motion carries.
Didn't write down our next meeting date, Charlie. But there isn't that, there isn't a meeting coming on.
That's good. July twenty?
July twenty.
July twenty seven.
That's all.
Okay, next up is policy.
We met just last night, June twenty-sixth, at Nessicus. We discussed the requests for changes to the approved vocational schools for both Peru and Windsor. And so I do have motions for both of those, which I'll get to in a moment. We also reviewed and added into our draft policy manual a simplified set of rules of order that were put together by Member Lakata. And then we continued to review Section B, which is apparently extremely long. But we are almost done. So the sections that we reviewed were from the EDG through the IA, which included the meeting minutes, public comment at school committee meetings, petitions, special procedures for conducting hearings, functioning as a policymaking body, policy adoption, the official seal of the school district, school committee and staff communications, the use of electronic messaging by school committee members. And we left off at new member orientation, which is where we will pick up on July thirty-first at six-thirty at Nessicus and hopefully really improve it this time. We'll continue on to Section C.
We're eighty-one pages in. A baby Bible. I mean, that's quite.
That's pretty good.
Pretty accomplished.
Are there any questions on any of that? All right. Be it resolved that the Central Berkshire Regional School Committee approve the removal of Charles H. McCann Technical School from the list of approved vocational schools for the town of Peru as recommended by the policy subcommittee.
Second. Motion or second? Any questions, discussions?
Why?
They asked, they asked to. Interesting. It was their choice, yeah. I think it's a challenging transportation for them.
They say what they wanted as their, are they going to do it with Smith or Connet?
They, I think they have several listed.
They do.
So they just, they did at McCann because of the challenging transportation.
Students who wanted to enroll at McCann in a program that's otherwise not offered at one of the other vocational schools would still have the option of attending. But if it's offered in one of the preferred schools, they would have to go there.
Okay. And would they have to find out transportation at McCann?
No.
So they'd still have? Well, if, if it wasn't offered. If it is offered, then, yeah.
That's why it's more expensive.
Okay, we have a motion or second? We did get a second, right? Yeah. So roll call vote please.
Mr. Albert?
Yes.
Mr. Case?
Yes.
Dr. Krefreese?
Yes.
Charlotte Crane?
Yes.
Mr. Emerson?
Yes.
Mr. Ferella?
Yes.
Dr. Jelena?
Yes.
Mr. Lakata?
Yes.
Ms. Ledizori?
Yes.
Ms. Lounsbury?
Yes.
Mr. Stewart?
Yes.
Sarah Tucker?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes, motion carries.
All right, and now for Windsor. Be it resolved that the Central Berkshire Regional School Committee approve the addition of Charles H. McCann Technical Schools to the list of approved vocational schools for the town of Windsor as recommended by the policy subcommittee.
Motion or second? Any discussion on this one?
Different person?
It's a different, different town.
So it's easier for Windsor, not as easy for prefer. It's easier to get there.
And any other questions? Roll call vote please.
Mr. Albert?
Yes.
Mr. Case?
Yes.
Dr. Krefreese?
Yes.
Charlotte Crane?
Yes.
Mr. Emerson?
Yes.
Mr. Ferella?
Yes.
Dr. Jelena?
Yes.
Mr. Lakata?
Yes.
Ms. Ledizori?
Yes.
Ms. Lounsbury?
Yes.
Mr. Stewart?
Yes.
Sarah Tucker?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes, motion carries.
And that's all.
That's it. Windsor next meeting?
July thirty-first.
All right, next up is safety and wellness. Liz, you're up.
Wonderful. Okay, so we met on Monday. Sorry to be one second before my minutes, so I can actually read what happened. So we met on Monday and we were able to discuss the health and wellness advisory meeting. That occurred on June eleventh. Leslie reported that at that meeting, Head Nurse Kelly Jean Delaher spoke about the illnesses at the end of school year, saying that really wasn't much going on at that point. There was some digest, oh, sorry. Digestive tract issues going on, but nothing major like heavy going on with COVID times. At the end of the year, she also reported that there was the staff support day, which had activities like golfing, yoga, massages, and health checks, where people could come in and they would get, I believe it was a twenty-five-dollar gift certificate if they got their metrics checked to see if they're being healthy. We also discussed about the health and wellness advisory meeting, that there is a, that we're continuing working on our vaping prevention programs that are at Nessicus as well as is going to be growing into Wacona as well. After that discussion about the health and wellness meeting, we had an outline of what the school does for concussion protocols as well as general injuries in general for students, whether that's sports-related or that occur outside of the school day or outside of school activities. Leslie explained that in the rare occurrence a student is suspected of receiving or is diagnosed with concussion, the district works with the, with the family and is very supportive of them and is able to provide information sheets, not just to the caregivers, but to the teachers as well, so that everyone has a very clear communication of how the student should be treated with this type of injury. To go back to sports-related activities, whether that's in gym class or in the extracurriculars, students have to receive a doctor's note or a doctor's clearance before returning. But one member had commented that knowing's parent who had a student that dealt with a concussion last year, that the student was able to still attend all the, all the events, does not actively participate in them. But they really encourage, the coaches really encourage students to continue being on the sidelines for their team and being involved as much as they can at that point. Leslie also gave us a quick update on a question that we had about bullying, which we are going to be receiving the full bullying infractions data at the August meeting, at the August school committee meeting, not just the safety and wellness meeting. But the question was, where is the bullying tending to occur in most? And the way that she was able to break it down that protected student identities is giving us percentages. And so she reported that about fifty percent occurs at the high school, thirty percent at the middle school, and twenty percent at the elementary schools. And like I said, there'll be a further breakdown of infractions as well as disciplinary action and, yeah, and disciplinary action at the August school committee meeting. Our next meeting will be sometime in mid-August. And we're looking to have discussions about data of how the cell phone usage in the schools has been affecting students and staff and if it's been improving. Anything at all, if there's any data to support its usefulness or not usefulness. We're also looking at, looking at the new menu update from the Director of Food Services. And Title IX changes and how it'll affect students in our district, and that will be later into the, into the fall. And then, sorry, one more topic of possible discussion in the future is discussing vaping across the district, but we don't have a timeline for that. And that's all I have. Thanks, guys.
Any questions, Karen? Thanks, Liz.
Bye-bye.
Okay, nothing to report for the court of feeling for regional ad hoc. I don't think there's anything else. We had a good discussion about that. Superintendent Evaluation Ad hoc, Barb?
Yeah, we met on June seventeenth via Zoom. And Leslie led us through the evidence that she's putting together. We're using the superintendent's performance evaluation document along with a self-assessment, goal-setting document, and a superintendent's evaluation document that Leslie put together in February this year. We are going to be presenting much of this to you at our next, at our next school committee meeting. So I look forward to giving you some specifics about the evidence that Leslie's put together. that Leslie's put together. I think you'll be very pleased with the documents and the ease of use, and it's very self-explanatory. So our next meeting is going to be on July, I wrote it down, and now I don't say it, July eighteenth, Thursday, via Zoom, and we'll present it to you, as I said, at the next school committee meeting.
Okay. Any questions, Karen? See you now? That's down to any old business.
Rich. We skipped personnel.
Oh, we did, we skipped personnel. Personnel.
Sorry, I didn't report. I do that, I do that. I did not know that, but I'm just saying that. Thank you. We covered the agenda.
Thank you. Any old business? Any new business? Remarks for the committee? Come on. Dave?
I, I would like to congratulate Dr. Michael Hennel for earning his doctorate, which is quite an accomplishment, so congratulations.
Thank you. Todd?
Having a senior graduate this year, it had been a while since I've been to senior assembly and graduation. I would just recommend if any of you are ever able to do it, it's really a great experience. The kids do a great job. They, they really do, so if you ever have a chance and have the time, I would recommend going.
I'll second that. Yeah. All right.
Go for it. Yeah. Go ahead. I went to the Craneville soiree that they had at the end of the soiree night or whatever it was. It was fun. My kids loved it. It was nice to see the principal meet with them there, and it was great. It was a good time.
It, it is great community. Yeah. All right, motion due at your end?
So moved.
Second. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Albert?
Yes.
Mr. Case?
Yes.
Dr. Craft Rees?
Yes.
Charlotte Crane?
Yes.
Mr. Emerson?
Yes.
Mr. Ferella?
Yes.
Dr. Jolinas?
Yes.
Mr. Lakata?
Yes.
Ms. Ledizori?
Yes.
Ms. Lounsbury?
Yes.
Mr. Stewart?
Yes.
Sarah Tucker?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Meeting adjourned. Thank you all.